Okay, today is Monday, March 15th, 4:00 PM. This is the Persian County Board of Commissioners Workshop. The, I noticed, oh, I was wondering. Public input. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments?
On Zoom?
Okay, item number three, topics to be discussed. Bill number 346, amending chapter 108 of the Persian County Development Code. By amending the provision of seventeen point one oh eight point two five to allow for solar energy development within the agricultural preservation overlay district with a special use permit. Mr. District Attorney, could you explain all this?
I will do my best if you can. Several weeks ago, the planning commission had in front of it an application, if you will, to amend a certain portion of the development code, that portion being chapter 108, which pertains to the AP district, the agricultural preservation district. Specifically, what they were looking for is to allow for the development of solar energy within the boundaries of the AP with a special use permit. And about a month ago, I believe it was February 3rd, maybe February 17th, the Board of County Commissioners introduced a bill that would allow for the amendment of the development code along the lines that I've specified. Specifically, it would allow for the development of solar energy within the agricultural, within the AP district under certain conditions. Number one, that a special use permit be allowed. There are some conditions on that, though, on whether a special use permit can be issued. The first one is that solar energy for, excuse me, production, it's been a long day, District Court. Solar energy production can be allowed subject to the following conditions without limitation. Number one, the development of solar energy shall not occur on prime farmland, nor interfere with agriculture production on prime farmland. The definition of prime farmland is found in the Persian County Development Code, but that may require some tweaking because those definitions are based upon references that were made in the USDA handbook and in the State of Nevada handbook, clear back in 1984. And no one that I've talked to, not even the county clerk, not even in my archives, can find the definitions of prime farmland as they existed in 1984, when the development code first came about. And so I've obtained a definition of prime farmland from the USDA that I think approximates what those definitions should be. And we can talk about that as this meeting progresses. So number one, solar development can occur on prime farmland, and it cannot interfere with agriculture production on prime farmland. Number two, the grantee of a special use permit must post a reclamation bond of $10,000 per acre of disturbance in the form of cash, and it has to make Persian County a beneficiary of that bond. And that's to ensure that if the solar energy project starts off and then things don't go well, it goes bankrupt, that we're not saddled for the next 20, 25 years with old dilapidated rusting solar energy panels on what could be used as farmland within the AP. And then number three, the last condition, is that the grantee of a special use permit and owner of real property for which a special use permit is issued shall agree not to transfer water rights beyond the boundaries of the agricultural preservation overlay district during the term of the special use permit. So the reason why you were all invited here is just to give you the opportunities, opportunity to ask questions of the Board of County Commissioners and also of myself, express support, express objections that you may have to this amendment taking place. The Board of County Commissioners just wanted to make sure that this process was done with everybody knowing that it was done and everybody having the opportunity to comment and to express their concerns or voice their support. So with that, are there any comments or is there anybody who wants to open up the discussion? And I'll turn it over to Mr. Rapp.
Okay, I see a couple of hands up. Benny?
Okay, put in a nutshell, right, I think I heard you say it.
Can you hear any more down? Okay. It's either that or you can come up here.
Okay, my name is Ben Martin, Danny Nigley. But Bryce, basically what you're saying in the nutshell, we're still going to essentially preserve the AP district as far as water rights within the boundaries, but then you're going to look at these on a case by case basis, right?
That's, that's why the special use permit.
Okay.
You want to clap, Rob, or are we going to use the mic?
Rob McDougall, resident of Persian County, former farmer, former commissioner. One of the things that I'm wondering about is, is, and I'm sort of jumping back to being a commissioner, should this be characterized as energy production and then providing definition for that, including solar, including wind turbines, including any other kind of possible energy production that could happen as opposed to being strictly, you know, this one item? And then if somebody came along later and wanted to put up some wind turbines on their property on a piece of ground that was otherwise a haystack or something, do they have to go through, you know, does the commission have to go through this whole process again? And I'm wondering if you kind of need to start out a little bit more generically at the top and kind of work into the more specifics of what that might entail.
So right now, if it's in the AP, right, and it's a solar energy project, it's only going to be allowed with a special use permit and under the provisions that have been outlined. And it doesn't matter whether it's, whether it's a hay yard, like you said, or whether it's, you know, scrub brush that's in the AP district, they still have to go on, they still have to apply. Was that your question, Rob?
No, that's not my question. My question is, why don't you start with a little bit broader brush and provide definitions that could allow for, you're talking about a specific project here, okay, but in governance, we should be approaching it as any kind of energy production that might viably occur that is new and different other than oil and gas production or geothermal, and those are all addressed. But newer technologies such as wind turbines to go along with the solar, if it starts out with that more generic criteria, and then within that ordinance, it can specify, these are the items that can fall under this ordinance.
So I mean, this is one of the reasons why we have meetings like this. The inclusion of one specific category of energy production was intentional. It was to exclude all other types of energy production, just to make sure that it was limited to one specific purpose. If it's, if there's an appetite to open that up, you know, there's been a first reading and we can probably proceed with that. But I mean, I guess the question is, should it be opened up to more general types of energy production? And does that put the agricultural preservation overlay district at risk of being overrun with all types of development that may be, when this district was created, that was not the intent for it?
Understood, and I think that the criteria you can require for the special use permit can handle that element of it. But I'm just thinking, if somebody can put down 100 acres of solar panels, but they need a quarter acre here or a quarter acre there to put up a wind turbine, wouldn't it make sense to try and catch those different uses at once? I think it's a mistake to govern on a case by case basis if you don't have to. And I think that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. You can still provide all the, all the criteria that you want to, to say, this is when and where through the special use permit, these things can occur, but don't tighten it down so tight that it's one thing that potentially at some time in the future, you have to go through this whole process again because there's one slightly different technology that is not included. So that's my point.
Sure. So Rob, you understand, that wasn't agendized, so the board can't talk about it, consider it, take action on it, but it certainly can as this progresses along.
Yes, and this is a public meeting, so we can talk about any ideas we have.
Yep. Yes, you can. Other comments? Mr. Clay, come on up.
Carl Clinger.
We need you to. Yes. We want to see you front and center.
Carl Clinger, Big Meadow Conservation District and local farmer. I have two concerns. The proposed ordinance states that this cannot affect prime farm ground. But currently, if a producer, say, has 160 acres, he's entitled to develop four acres of that for dwellings. One dwelling per 40 acres, which he can cluster. So if, let's say, a producer has 160 acres and half of it's prime farm ground, irrigatable, all of that, and the other part is fresh land, which he wants to put solar panels on. And so he puts solar panels on half of that, and then a few years later, he wants to come along and put housing. So now he puts housing on prime farm ground, whereas if there had not been solar, it could have gone on the non-prime farm ground. The second item I have a concern about is back in the 80s and 90s, when the egg preservation was, was worked on and developed, there was a lot of concern and talk about setbacks.
Carl, that ignores that it can't, solar development can't be allowed on prime farmland.
Right, the solar development isn't on prime farmland, but because of the solar development, we're losing prime farms.
You're not, because the code says, and I'll refer you to section 17, 108, 25, sub B, it says where cluster development is to be located on prime farmland. A maximum of four dwelling units, including existing dwelling units, may be clustered for each 160 acres of contiguous land. The maximum lot size permitted shall be one acre. There shall be no more than four dwelling units per cluster. So if they don't have 160 acres, then they can't do it. That's something that they're going to have to be aware of before they take that step into allowing for solar development on non-prime farm.
If a person has 40 acres, they can put one dwelling.
On non-prime farmland, but not prime, prime farmland. There's a difference between the two.
I understand the difference.
But the difference is you could do a cluster of 160 on prime and 40 on non-prime.
I don't see that.
Okay, I can show you after the meeting.
So what you're saying is that, so you're saying that they could not do development?
If they don't have 160 acres.
Of prime farm ground.
They don't have 160 contiguous acres, then there can't be a cluster. Can.
Cannot.
Cannot.
So, but they could put housing non-clustured.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in accordance with the full rules contained in that AP district.
Okay. So again, my concern is that prime farm ground will be lost because there's no non-prime farm ground to develop on.
But they can put it, they can put it on prime farmland right now if they want. I mean, there's no difference. I mean, essentially, there's no difference whether it's, whether it's turned into black acre that's producing solar or whether it's producing alfalfa, the result is the same. They're still going to be deciding, okay, I can either put the development on non-prime farmland and then I can, you know, put a house on prime farmland. But that, that could occur regardless of whether it's used for solar energy production. And I don't know, I think it begs the question whether non-prime farmland is being used for agriculture purposes right now.
Well, certainly.
Right. So that supports the argument even more that whether you use non-prime farmland for solar development, if you're using it for an ad purpose, then, and it's already taken up and you need a house, then your only place is going to be to put it on prime farmland, right? But regardless, if you're using it for an ad purpose, it's allowed under the AP, or whether you're using it for solar development, it's still being used for a purpose that the farmer intends.
But.
And then they just decide that they're going to use the land that they own to put a house up.
Most producers would prefer to put their development on non-prime farm ground because the production return from that is much smaller compared to the prime farm ground.
Right, and that's an economic decision that producers are going to have to make. And I apologize if I'm seeming like I'm advocating for this because I'm not. I don't have a dog in a fight, frankly, so this is merely for people to express concerns, and if you feel like that's a hole in the ordinance right now, then we can tie it up, or if you feel like that's a reason for the commission not to vote in favor of this, then
I just felt it was a hole and was clear. The other item that I have a concern about, which was discussed at length back when the AP ordinance was first discussed, was the setbacks, and the setback was listed as 100 feet. And as I look through the documentation, if it's allowed in the AP, then that 100-foot setback is not required. And I feel that it ought to be required.
So I'm looking at the dimensional standards for residential dwellings. And it says that, first off, dwellings should not be closer than 20 feet from another structure. The front yard has to have a front setback of not less than 30 feet from the property line. The side yard is 10 feet from the property line, and the rear yard is a setback of not less than 30 feet from the property line.
Yes, but then in the AP, there's an additional requirement of.
I'm looking at the AP, Carl. Seventeen point one oh eight.
That's for.
Dimensions for residential dwellings.
Yes, that's for the dwelling that the producer's putting on his property, that's not for the adjacent property.
So you're worried about setbacks.
You mentioned 100 feet.
Yes.
Now, that was in there, and it was 100 feet to, the exact wording I don't have in front of me, 100 feet to prime or main residence, that's what it was, or main building, I should say. So if it was on a property, not the main building, then another building could be within that 100 feet.
I don't believe so. So what's your reference, Carl?
Yeah. Do you remember that being the case, Alan?
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
The property, I'm looking at section 17, 502.25 setbacks E. Number three, transition area between residential, general rural, commercial, regulatory, within the AP boundary, where a parcel and a residential regulatory land use district abuts the agricultural preservation boundary, the setback of the principal building shall be a minimum of 100 feet.
That's what I was trying to say, the principal building, yeah. So the principal building has to be outside of the 100 feet, other buildings can be within the 100 feet. Other outbuildings.
The property is separated from the agricultural preservation boundary by a natural barrier, public improvement, including the exchange, da, da, da. If it's at least 50 feet wide, if such barrier, and properly screened and buffered, if such barrier is less than 100 feet wide. My understanding of that was that there was a boundary around the AP or the prime farm ground of 100 feet. That was my understanding of that.
And we may be, we may be getting a little off track here, but the reason I remember that, there's three houses or three lots, maybe not lots, three residences close by to me where the house is outside the 100 feet, but yet they have a barn, a garage, another building within that 100 feet.
So you're talking about sub three, right? Paragraph three?
Yes.
Okay. And your question is to whether it applies to solar panels or the principal building?
Yes.
So it looks like that would only apply to the principal building, like Commissioner rightly said.
So.
And bear in mind that, I mean, that restriction, that 100 feet setback, it only pertains when residential, general rural, and commercial land use districts abut the act preserve. But it's not true for different parcels that butt each other within the AP. Essentially, it's on the boundary of the AP, we have general rural, commercial, regulatory, or residential districts.
Well, I guess what I'm advocating for would be a 100-foot boundary between the solar development and prime program.
Then, to me, that's not the way it reads, but yeah, but you'd like to see that. I would like to see that.
Yes.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Yes, Alan.
Yes, may I speak to this?
Yes, please, come up.
Need my name?
Yes, please.
For the record, it's Alan List.
Okay, I made a suggestion at the hearing at the planning board. It seemed to go nowhere, and maybe because the planning board had been working on this for a long time. It was a practical measure, once you put solar panels on that ground, and they say it could be moved back to agriculture, it's gone, it's never going to be agriculture again, so why not rezone this? You're right up, right next to the other, others, rezone it so it's not in the agricultural area anymore. Then you get away from all of these issues you're talking about here. The AMH district bound, boundary, I think, completely encircles the egg preservation district. Then take it by a case by case, if somebody wants to put solar panels on, have it logical to rezone it and change it, do it, then you don't have any of these issues on prime ground and all of these other things. But as a practical matter, once you put solar panels on, it's never going to be agriculture again. I think that's, would solve everybody's problem. Go back to the thing, these people can have their solar panels like they've applied for, but do it in a different manner, rather than trying to rezone the entire egg preservation district. I mean, I don't think you want solar panels up right next to the city, there's some places you want them and don't. It makes sense, particularly around. It makes sense, particularly around the fringe areas, I think it makes some sense to use some other things, and that's where most of your four farm grounds is. So I would urge you to ask the planning commission to go back to. Starting point, rezone this thing and get it done and get away from all of these other issues.
Well, Alan, I don't know if you remember, but I agreed with your proposal.
Yeah, but it kind of went over the heads of everybody else.
And has this, has this led up to it, that's something that I wanted to see happen, I'm not sure. Why it didn't go that, that route, but we have. People in the meeting could perhaps speak of that, but for me, that's a cleaner way to do it as well, you remove. Anything away from the AP and.
Instead of the.
A lot of rights issues and special use permit, you can still require a special use permit, but. You just take, take it out of the AP and rezone the areas that are essentially on the fringes and they're non-prime farm ground anyway. Just so they're not really being used for prime farm land and I think you could avoid a lot of the. Issues and some of the concerns that Carl Kleiner has expressed, so.
The water rights are a different issue, I'm not familiar with how the irrigation district would handle that.
So from your information, the irrigation district, there's a note, I just saw it when I sat down from. It looks like there's a note from Walter Brinkerhoff. I don't know if that's, that isn't necessarily from the irrigation. District, but he does know that his ascent. To this change is based in part. On the fact that the Pershing County Water Conservation District has been consulted about the proposed addition of solar. In the ag preserve area and the water conservation district is not opposed, so. They have been consulted.
The water rights are there, whether it's in the ag preservation district or not, they just have to be co-terminates. Anyway, that's just a suggestion, I'd like to see you guys consider, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McDougall. Hi, I apologize for taking potentially other people's time, but. So I think this discussion makes complete sense for the project that, you know, Linda represents here and so forth. But I, I start to think to myself, for example, when, when my family owned Nevada Nile Ranch. The road into that ranch, we had about three miles between South Meridian Road and the river. And fairly decent sized setbacks from the county road itself. Theoretically, those spaces could have been used to have linear. Solar panel systems if we had chosen to, to go that route. It wouldn't have been a solar farm, but it would still be an opportunity. For a business either to produce their own electricity or to produce some that they might be able to contract and sell. And I think we need a little bit of clarity on. Is there a specific size or land coverage kind of a mentality going into. This project, which I totally get and I, I don't object to a lot of the things that have been said here, they make a lot of sense. But also, if you have potential for some smaller scale use that sort of plugs into some. Otherwise unused land, but it's not specifically, you know, a section or something like that. I know in Germany, a lot of the federal highways over there, they put solar panels along the sides of the highways. And then they buy coal-fired electricity from Poland, but. Anyway, I'm just thinking, you know, if, if it gets around to a point, I wouldn't want to restrict. A farmer from say, you know, if, if he was able to put one or two or three lines of solar panels along his road. That's within his property, something like that. I don't know if that's commercially viable and frankly, it's irrelevant whether it's commercially viable. From the commission's standpoint, it's like, if someone chose to do it, would it be allowed?
So with that in mind of. Rezoning. Instead of the special use permit, you, you, you were kind of in favor of that.
Well, it would still require a special use permit.
Yeah, for use, yes.
Right, it would just take out solar development from the ag preserve. So we wouldn't have issues with setbacks, we wouldn't have. Issues with whether it's on prime farm land or non-prime farm land. You know, when you're step, when you start to deal with definitions like that, they get a little squishy, be subject to manipulation.
Come on now.
Yeah, and I. Lindable and I represent the subject here, this is Jordan Levin. And unfortunately, the discussion about rezoning happened with pandemic many years ago, so. I'm a little bit fuzzy on some of the details, but we did explore that route first. And we went to the water conservation district and that's why we ended up on this course of action, because. I don't want to speak for anybody today, but they were not in favor of it at that time. So that's why we ended up here, but Jordan, maybe you.
Yeah, I recall, you know, we worked really closely to understand like what would work best for everybody with their concerns and. I remember like just the idea of bringing up taking land out of the ag preservation area was not. Was not preferred, that idea, I'm taking out of that preservation.
Yeah. Maybe they were concerned about the tax base.
Well, there was tax, clearly the water was, that's part of the issue, but they wanted. The only way that they would be in agreement with taking land out is that there was a net gain. Addition somewhere else so that there wasn't any loss. It's like a certain number of acres that they want to stick with. And at least, you know, again, for this project, it wasn't workable. I can't speak universally across the county, but that's why we ended up in this place.
Yeah.
That way it kept the water in the air, land in the ag gate, the flexibility throughout time to do what was best for that.
And the idea of the prime farmland. You know, we think a good addition because that helps protect what they were really interested in is protecting the farmland.
Yeah.
That's about it.
We definitely considered it, and you know, obviously, you know.
Sort of beat it to death.
We've had a lot of discussions up to this point, so. Obviously, the. The objective is to make sure that we, we work together, what works for you there, what works for the ag preservation of this project and stuff, so. Conscious of that.
And at the same time gives the landowners the flexibility that. I can, you know, that they want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the history.
Tom.
My name is Tom, I'm a farmer, I farm on the fringe. So I, I don't like the idea of, of the rezoning of preserved land. I think that these ladies who were up here kind of. Set the tone for what I, I think I need to say that, that the water rights, I think, are the biggest issue when we. When we take ag. Prime ground out of the ag preserve. In this case, it probably works because there's, he has other lands. That are available for transfer, but in other cases, that might not happen. In light of that, we see too many cases where. Outside interests, outside money, big money, developers of other kinds. Come in and have the ability to buy that water. And possibly transfer it for other uses, it would still be an agricultural use, but it could go for. Quote unquote, conservation purposes. And furthermore, then in the case where a farmer doesn't, isn't able to. Transfer his water rights, you can't put water on top of water, it's, that's, that's just the state law. You can't use it on your same farm. So. I don't like the idea of developing. Of creating these development areas within the ag reserve. I think Robert's statement of putting in panels. On fringe areas, I, I think that could be acceptable. It's not interfering with ag preserve, it's not interfering with water rights. So I'm, I'm opposed to this all the, in every shape or form of creating development zones within.
Thanks.
You have a question? I'll get to. No, where? Many hard.
Very hard, just. Some of the stuff I've missed been said, said in the past, but. A long time when this ordinance was put in to preserve the ag district, and that was the main thing was to preserve the ag district in its entirety. I think one of the things that should always be remembered is. Before something like that could be done, were posed and it should be on non-watered ground. Where somebody has the ability to move some water rights off of ground to another piece of ground. And for a lot of people in the valley, that would be hard to do, so it's not like we're going to have a wholesale. Situation where a lot of people are transferring water off and moving it around, because they're all going to be. There's just not that much to do, there's a few of them that can do it, and the ones that are able to do that, most of their ground is very marginal. It's on the outskirts of a district or on the southern end, they're on the edges where there's real marginal ground. Now, Rob, where Rob was talking about. They have that setback on there, but that ground still was watered right, they just, it was used on the ground, so. In theory, if you, I'm just trying to use an example, in theory, if you would allow something like that, you would still be having. Solar panels on water right of ground, okay? I just think it should be looked at case by case, and I think that. You should try to remember the number thirty seven five oh six, because that's how many water righted acres are within the district. And try to use that as your parameters to work with, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Yer with Western Nevada Cattle Feeders. The deal about rezoning and taking it out of the agri-preservation deal is a bad. Way because it's not just local governments that have control, it's state and federal governments that have control. And if the state and federal says, okay, how many do they, how many acres do they have in the ag preservation district? How many water righted acres is that, if we start slowly taking away from that by rezoning. That could really hurt us in the, in the water, right?
Yeah.
And so that's, that's farmer's perspective, let's try not to touch that because that could really. Ding us in the future.
But the special use permit. Different is okay?
Well, yeah, because when the government, state or federal look at it and say, okay. They have special use for this, solar is considered not permanent, it, it has a shelf life. So you might be using it for thirty years or whatever the shelf life is, but it's not long term forever. And so by having a special use in, within the agri-preservation district, we don't lose any.
Right.
Ag preservation acres, but, and so they might leave us alone. As in state and federal.
Yeah.
And also the deal about hundred-feet barrier. Is fine, but the problem with is what are you going to do with that hundred feet? It's just going to create a weed problem for us to deal with, our weed taxes will go sky high, be a lot more management. And what is it hurting?
Yeah.
So. And that's basically all I have to say, other than I'm supportive of the solar.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Or any comments, I should say? Anybody on Zoom, Justin?
I, I still have. One hurdle that I have is that, yes, solar development is, is not permanent. However, there's, there's water rights that exist on that thirty acres, one hundred acres or one hundred and sixty acres, someone's got to use them. It's not used for thirty years, I think then that are, I think then that beneficial use is gone, if I'm not mistaken. We have to use it, you know, okay?
Somebody called and used it.
Well, yeah, somebody can make a call.
But you can use that.
No, because he has, he has the ability to retract from the water. So that in essence is gone for me.
Yeah.
No, but what we're, what I was saying is, the setup where you can't move that water. In the toll. Oh, absolutely, when you can, absolutely. Yeah, because otherwise then.
What's that, Jordan?
The third provision was about moving the water to make sure it stays within the ag, it does not, it's bad, right?
Yes.
He ever said that the water was a fair bit, so you want to make sure that that.
Mary Rob's dancing.
Is he dancing? It may be the last time.
So I, I made some notes and to me, I think one of the critical elements that you have to do if you're going to approve this. Is you have to define. Make sure the special use permits only allows it in a certain. Couple of certain places, one is on surplus land. And you have to define what that means. Whether it's stack yards, roads that aren't being used.
Are being used for crop.
Or, yeah, or not used for crops, and then secondly, marginal land. So if you define, because I know that property very well, because we used to try and farm it, right? And we could give about a quarter ton of grain per acre out of that, maybe. So if you, if you go in and you, and you create a formula and say, okay. Productivity of alfalfa in this valley on average is, you know, say, three and a half tons per acre, I hope it's a lot more. I hope it's not five, six tons per acre, but. You identify an average productivity on, on the main crops, so you've got corn, alfalfa, grain and several. And then you define within that, what does marginal mean, well, marginal might mean. That whatever that ground is able to produce is less than fifty percent of that. Valleywide average or something, and I'm, the numbers are, for example, I, I'm not saying those are the right numbers. But I think that's the way you have to approach it, you may end up writing. An ordinance that essentially allows this project to happen and no others could have.
No others like that.
Simply because Dan has the ability to move the water around the valley that a lot of the other farmers don't. So that was just my thinking is, I think the definitions matter.
Thank you.
For that.
Did I say that, Alan?
I just wanted to clarify again, water rights are completely separate from ag preservation. If you rezoned that after AMH, we still have water, so it really makes no difference whether you're. Rezoned or stays in the AP district, water rights are both totally separate issues.
Yeah.
So you can rezone and put water rights gate in the center of the valley and still farm right around there?
Your water rights are going to be there, however, so. You know, water.
They're going to be there, but they're not used.
You've got.
They're going to be covered up, not used.
What?
The water right should be there. They can cover that for modern use.
Yeah, they could. They need to be not used for transfer or something. They'd be there.
We know the person that you've been managing is that.
So I I agree with the comment that was made that if we allow it, or if the board of county commissioners allows it on water righted property, and you put a solar development on there for fifteen or twenty years, you're going to lose your water rights because you're not putting it to a beneficial use. And so for all intents and purposes, you have removed that land from the ag preserve, because there's no longer water rights to it. Technically, you could transfer water rights to it, I guess. But something that we were hoping to accomplish is to preserve the water rights with that, within the AP, to make sure that they're not transferred out. And to make sure that all of the arable land or all of the good farmland within the AP has access to water rights. So, you know, it's been suggested by Benny and also by Rob that we don't allow or that the board does not allow for the development of solar energy on water righted property. So how would you all feel about that? And is that going to exclude this opportunity from too many producers? Does everybody have property that is non-waterited? So they, you know, if they wanted to, they could take advantage of this.
I don't.
Farmer has more water rights and they're part of that.
Okay.
They own the ground. If they're not farming.
They may not be. Yeah, they may not be farming it, but it is water righted land. Okay, right. Come on up.
Hey, thank you, Matt.
And that's near the power lines. That's why it's not. Part of the valley, our line. Running transmission lines, border valley, all over the valley. The second thing is, you're not taking into consideration, farmers smart enough, he's not going to some, he's going to water rights. Give him some credit. You're not going to send him to water rights. Most of them. So
So, big, one of the things I think you missed, though, it was suggested earlier in the meeting that the ordinance be more comprehensive and allow for an expansion of these green energy type products or productions. And so that's why I think we're now on the discussion of the implications that would have across the entire ag preserve, not just that limited little portion that this project would encompass.
Even a wind farm would have to be close to the same transmission.
Yeah, but now we're talking, I'm looking at a piece of paper in front of me that says geothermal electricity or direct hot water use. Natural gas production, petroleum production. Which brings to mind, I guess, one of the reasons why it was written the way that it was, and please, if you have input, voice, voices from the county commissioner, so they can make the best ordinance that they can. But one of the reasons why it was written just to allow for solar energy production is that we're laboring under the assumption that once you remove the solar panels, that property can go back to farmland, and it can be arable again, and it can be used. Whereas I don't know if that's true for some of these types, like petroleum production or natural gas production or even thermal energy. Because we want to maintain the the rural characteristics of Love Lock. I mean, this is a farm producing valley, and it has been for generations, centuries, or a century. We'd like to maintain that. And so is there? I'm just asking you all for input on whether it should be expanded to allow for additional types of production, energy production. JP says, yeah.
Some of those systems, see, the thing is, the solar by its nature has to have a huge footprint to to work. Natural gas production takes about, you know, two hundred square feet or something. I mean, really small spaces if there was natural gas here. Same with petroleum production. It's, you know, it's a thousand square feet. The footprint of a wind turbine might only be a few hundred feet in each direction. So you've got some different animals going on there. And so it's not like, you know, you're going to have wind turbines covering thousands of acres. They sit within thousands of acres, but each one really only has a small footprint. So I think I think they're a little bit different animals, but my thinking is just energy production is energy production in a lot of different kinds. And if there was ever a discovery of something like, you know, viable natural gas or petroleum or or geothermal, you know, below the floor of this valley, wouldn't you want to allow for the exploitation of it?
I just say, I just come through wind turbine areas, gas areas. The footprint of an oil well is probably the size between those four posts right there.
Not much.
Right up next to you, you got that thing going up and down. Doesn't think anything at all. The wind turbine might take the size of this room for their footprint or at bottom. Rest of the department, actually, they got all the farm ground back there.
Yeah, and the same thing goes with solar. You see in some of these farm acts, they have solar up high above LifeLock, and LifeLock is raising the.
JP?
There'd have to be a lot of I's, L's, and T's crossed, but my way of looking from the sense is, take the water off pardon my expression, crafty ground, and either sell it was in the district to somebody that has better ground and uses all that ground.
Yeah, that's how it's written, right?
Are we, are you still planning wording of prime farmland? The name of this ordinance?
That's the way. That's the way, yeah, that we, well, that's one of the reasons why we had this, to see if there's a better idea out there.
Water right and non-water right. Yeah, I think you have to go with water right. I mean, perhaps maybe you ought to explore with the NRCS, some of the some of the land capabilities of the soil profiles and how soil profiles that many of us farm are similar to what so I think you need to look at soil type and the capabilities that the NRCS has spelled out. Try and strike that program.
So I looked into that, Tom. I have not received an answer from that.
Question about the water right versus water, but not water. If the current ground is water right, it would not, the soil would not be allowed. And a lot of use.
That's, that's what Benny proposed.
So that would dissolve by year length. And that's so, yes, because if that's the definition.
I can't even.
If that's the definition.
What's that?
If that's, if that's how, rather than just saying prime farmland, if it becomes water right versus non-water right, then who, that we're done with certain land in this case that we've been looking at?
Well, that's, that's part of going back to what ag preservation, the activists, according to many, many years ago, was to preserve the ag district. That's why I said if you work within the parameters, thirty seven thousand five hundred and sixty. What he's doing is he's saying, move his water rights up to the.
But that's, that's number three in this ordinance. We're talking right now about number one, which is pine works at non.
Well, that's why we shouldn't wear masks. I'm going to call that card. I've never pulled it in my life. That's just.
I would just want to make sure his land would be swallowed by.
We're still talking about ag preservation. Okay. That's what's not the bad.
I go back to, I like the idea of saying prime farm land, but having a good definition of what that is. And I think that's turning what Rob, one of your several comments on, on, that's what you're talking about, you know, with whatever you're talking about, you know, video or whatever. Rather than defining it as a negative, define it, you know, the other way, just here's what prime farm land is, and if it's not prime.
Then it's marginal.
Marginal.
Another way to know what my, what my, my, my system is that I'm a farm ground, this valley is as a water. That's way too simple.
Well, how is prime defined in the ag preservation district?
So I think you ought to just consider some other description.
Let me. So I've got about two minutes before I have to leave. I apologize, but I've got to go be a babysitter for our kids. My wife's got a meeting at five fifteen. But this is the this was sent to me by Linda Bolland, and this is the definition of prime farmland coming from the USDA and the NRCS. Says prime farmland. Land that has the best combination of physical and chemical characteristics for producing food, feed, forage fiber, and oil seed crops, and is also available for these types. It has the soil quality, growing season, and moisture supply needed to produce economically sustained high yields of crops when treated and managed according to acceptable farming methods, including water management. In general, prime farmlands have an adequate and dependable water supply from precipitation or irrigation. A favorable temperature and growing season, acceptable acidity or alkalinity, acceptable salt and sodium content, and few or no rocks. It is permeable to water and air. Prime farmlands are not excessively erodible or saturated with water for a long period of time. And they either do not flood frequently or are protected from flooding. So according to the USDA and the NRCS, that's what prime farmland is, and that is the definition that we had intended on going forward with in this ordinance.
You had a comment, Kyle?
I have a couple of comments. One is, once Dan transfers the water off, then it's, it's on prime. By the, by the definition that Bryce just read. So it doesn't if you used to turn water right ground, it wouldn't, wouldn't prevent Dan from doing what he wants to do. The other comment I have is, in terms of the setbacks, four people are going to have a weed problem no matter what. So they've just extended their weed problems from underneath the solar panels over a hundred acres. So that's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Kind of lost my train of thought there, sorry. Well, about the setbacks is a problem because solar is shaded. And so your weeds are going to be twenty feet tall unless you just spray it every week. We, to manage, manage ground means you either spray it or you. There is no. And so, or cover it, or. Shaded it out. And also, we should have it where it does not take any water right ground out of production, period.
Yeah.
I mean, you can put solar around quarters. You can put it in the middle of the field, as long as you do not lose any production or any ground that does not get. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, we've had some, oh, Brad, Jippy.
There's some ground that's started, because it takes so much water to get the water there in the first place. It's not even used.
Yeah. They may be water right, but getting it, there's another story.
Yeah, the efficiency is not only because of, because of the training.
Yeah.
My understanding that water has to be pumped twice to this piece of property irrigated.
We've had some very good comments today to help us in our decision. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, thank you for being here. I have to go through public input again. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on and the agenda as an item of a fun action, which action will be taken. Public commentary will be limited to three business members. Any more public comments? Saying that, this meeting is adjourned.